Call the July 12th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission, both for those of you who are with us in the audience this evening and those watching the televised version of the meeting. For your information, there are copies of tonight's agenda at the speaker's lectern. For those who may not have attended one of our meetings, we will be having public hearing this evening and then followed by our regular agenda during which time there will be a public comment period for those who may wish to address the Planning Commission on items that is not, the items that are not on tonight's public hearing agenda. Where is my agenda? Okay. We move to item three on the agenda, the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. First is the June 14th, 2017 work session and the June 14th, 2017 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve these two sets of minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item four on the agenda is Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. It is at this time in the meeting where any member of the commission who believes that he has a conflict of interest regarding any matter that is on the agenda this evening is recognized to state what the item is and the existence of a personal interest. Does anyone have a declaration to make at this time?
I do.
You do.
Yes. I have a conflict of interest regarding item number seven, Hampton's Phase Two. Due to a personal interest, my spouse works for a company which has expressed interest in purchasing and developing the property. Therefore, I have removed myself from any involvement with the project and related applications as required under the Virginia Code 2.2-3112A1.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sherman. I don't know, I guess this applies to staff as well as to members, that if you have filled out that form, then it would be attached to our meeting minutes for this evening.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the fifth item on the agenda, the public hearing item. This is Metacor Properties, Inc. I was just wondering on, as I read the public notice on this, is there any way to show on the monitors copies of the signs? Or is that to, I was trying to give people an idea of what it is that we're talking about. Can we do that?
That's part of my PowerPoint presentation, is that?
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Metacor Properties, Inc., SE 2017-01 requests a special exception to install four signs for Mary Washington Hospital. Sign number one is proposed within the public right-of-way for Jefferson Davis Highway on the northbound lanes adjacent to GPIN 7779-65-8302, 1301 College Avenue, and is zoned R2 residential. Sign number two is proposed within the public right-of-way for Jefferson Davis Highway on the southbound lanes adjacent to GPIN 7779-67-2975, which is 591 Jefferson Davis Highway, and is zoned CSC Commercial Shopping Center. That's the location of the CVS, correct?
Correct.
Right. Sign number eight is proposed on GPIN 7779-49-0183, within the public right-of-way for Mary Washington Boulevard, eastbound lanes, and is zoned CT Commercial Transitional Office. Sign number 10 is proposed on GPIN 7779-36-6265, which is 1400 Hospital Drive, and is zoned CT Commercial Transitional Office. I believe that's at the top of the hill, isn't it, as you're going out toward Cowan Boulevard? The site for sign number one is located in Planning Area 5 and is designated as institutional. The sites for signs 2, 8, and 10 are located in Planning Area 4 and are designated as Transitional Office. The signs will require exceptions from the regulations in City Code Section 7.2-59.6 to exceed permitted heights and sizes, to deviate from lighting standards, and to reduce setbacks. In the public notice, there's a chart, I'm not going to pretend to go through this chart, but it is included on the agenda that is at the lectern. Okay. When the time comes for public comment at the public hearing, we ask that you please step up to the podium and state your name and address, including zip code, clearly for the record. As provided in the commission's bylaws, you are asked to please observe the five-minute time rule, and you may only speak one time to an application, and no dialogue will be permitted between speakers. And I would remind all those speakers that we require that decorum and civility be maintained at all times during our meetings. Mr. Craig, are you doing it, Marnie?
Me.
Okay, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you. Computer, please. Thank you. Yes, today we're talking about SE 2017-1 regarding signage for Metacor Properties, Inc., who owns and manages the property that contains Mary Washington Hospital. A little background for you, in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the old sign that they used to have that was approved in 2016 by special, excuse me, in 2011 by special exception. That sign was located at the intersection of Mary Washington Boulevard and Jefferson Davis Highway, and contained 229 square feet of total sign area, had an electronic variable message board, and stood 29 feet in height. With the widening of the Fall Hill Avenue, well, widening of Fall Hill Avenue and the extension of Mary Washington Boulevard in 2016, that sign was removed. In preparation for the removal of that sign, in order to maintain visibility, Metacor did apply for a special exception application at a nearby location. You all did review that application and make a recommendation to City Council. However, that application was withdrawn due to some opposition by the condominium association in the Associated Office Park. While all that was going on, also again to maintain visibility, the city did issue temporary sign permits in two locations. They're in the locations of the proposed signs numbers one and two along Jefferson Davis Highway. Those signs are 13 feet in height, are single-sided, and are not illuminated. As you know, Mary Washington Boulevard was extended. That provided a new major entrance to the hospital campus. That's the location shown for sign number eight. Recently, Metacor Properties has considered changing out all of their signage, both outside of the campus and within the campus. They have submitted a signed design package within the property's own PDMC that contains signs numbered four through number nine, and that can be reviewed and approved administratively. That application is currently undergoing review. The proposed onsite signage is consistent with the allowed heights, sizes, and designs as permitted under the UDO, and is coordinated with the proposed sign, subject to the special exception application. For clarification purposes, sign number three is not involved with this application or the administrative review. So, just to, I know people like to follow the numbers, sign number three is not part of either proposal. So what is being proposed? Metacor is proposing four signs shown on the screen in front of you. Sign number one is located on Jefferson Davis Highway in the existing public right-of-way just north of Alvey Drive. It's next to the Mary Washington Inter Merrill Fields, for those of you who are familiar with that. It's, or I'll go through the locations. Sign number two is located adjacent to the southbound lanes of Jeff Davis Highway, as you said, closer to CVS and the canal. Sign number eight is located within the newly extended Mary Washington Boulevard adjacent to the Snowden Office Park on the eastbound lane side. Sign number 10 is located on the east side of Hospital Drive, just prior to the roundabout as you are entering the hospital campus from Cowan Boulevard. This is another view of it. It's a little hard to see on your screen, but this was included in your package, just for reference. Sign number one, as I said, is located adjacent to the University of Mary Washington campus. That property is zoned R2. The applicant is proposing a sign that is 80 square feet in size, is 20 feet in height, and would be internally illuminated within the public right-of-way. The screen shows what the proposals are, and if the text under it is in red, those are items that are subject to the special exception request. If the language is in green, then it's compliant with our current code. So sign number one would exceed the maximum size by 60 square feet, the maximum height by 15 square feet, would use internal illumination instead of illuminated only by direct white lighting, illuminating just the face of the sign, and it's within public right-of-way, so it doesn't meet the setback requirements. Sign number two matches sign number one. It would be located, again, adjacent to the CVS Pharmacy and the canal in property zone Commercial Shopping Center. It complies with the maximum size at 80 feet, 80 square feet. It complies with the maximum height at 20 feet in height. Internal illumination is permitted in this zoning district, however, it does not comply with the setback requirements.
Marnie, can you explain where this proposed sign is vis-à-vis the existing sign in the photo?
It would be in its place. They would be taking down the temporary sign, which again is 13 feet in height, and replacing it with this sign.
It'd be between the curb and the sidewalk?
That's right.
And that was true in the previous sign as well? The previous?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, sign one, yes.
It would be at that same location, exact same location?
Yes. This is on the other side of the sidewalk, but yes. Sign number eight, there hasn't ever been a sign here before because no one ever used to drive or do anything on this property until the road was extended. So sign number eight is adjacent to the park at Snowden Office Park, however, it's heavily buffered with existing and mature vegetation. It's on property zone CT. It would exceed the maximum size at 80 square feet instead of the 40 square feet permitted. It would exceed the maximum height at 20 feet in height instead of 5 feet. Internal illumination is permitted, so that's okay, and it doesn't meet the setback requirements because it would be in the city's right-of-way. And that would be, if you see the little white square, that's the public hearing sign. It's in that approximate location. Sign number 10 is on, proposed to be on property owned by Metacor, on the property addressed at 1400 Hospital Drive. It's zoned CT. The maximum size permitted is 40 square feet. They're asking for 42 square feet. The maximum height permitted is 5 feet. They're asking for 10 feet. Internal illumination is permitted, and it would only set back one foot behind the property line instead of 5 feet, or, excuse me, 10 feet as required under today's code. It would be roughly, it would be replacing the sign that's shown in your lower-left picture. I think it's roughly about the same size in height. This chart is the one that you referred to as being in the public hearing ad. This is in your package. This goes through each individual sign and compares it to what's permitted by right, or by right instead of what they're asking for. Anything that's highlighted in yellow is subject to the special exception request. There are six items that must be evaluated to determine if it's appropriate to issue a special exception. The first is consistency with the comprehensive plan. The sign, the site for sign number one is located in Planning Area 5, the University Route 1 area, and is designated as institutional. Mary Washington Hospital is one of the city's institutional partners and is the second-largest employer in the city. One of the comprehensive plan's policies for institutional jurisdictional partnerships, as listed on page 157, is to maintain strong liaisons with the hospital, to share information, support each other's initiatives, and to coordinate efforts. The sites for signs 2, 8, and 10 are located in Planning Area 4, the hospital Cowan Boulevard area, and are designated as Transitional Office. The first opportunity listed in the land use Planning Area 4 section on page 138 is to support the continued development of the Mary Washington Hospital Metacor Medical Campus and the surrounding supportive services. This application would be consistent with that, with the comprehensive plan. Item number two is consistency with the UDO. As pointed out earlier, there are certain facets of the sign that would comply with the UDO regulations, and there are certain elements that do not. I will say that sign number one, while it does not conform with the R2 zoning district and the allowed sign heights and sizes, it does, it is generally consistent with the existing signage along Jefferson Davis Highway and the commercial zoning districts and uses along the corridor. The CSC, the Commercial Shopping Center, which applies to sign number two, that sign does comply with all the UDO requirements except the location. Sign number eight is in the CT zoning district. It does not comply with height or size or location, and is not adjacent to the hospital, but I wanted to point out that no other signs front on Mary Washington Boulevard, and no other uses do either. So this would be the only one out there, and therefore would be establishing the pattern. Sign number 10 is located in the CT zoning district. It exceeds the maximum permitted height and size and does not comply with the setbacks. While the property is zoned CT, it is the gateway to the hospital campus, which is zoned PDMC, Planned Development Medical Campus. This sign is consistent with the larger campus zoning district allowances for signs. Number three, whether there's been sufficient time for investigation and community planning with respect to the application. Answer's yes. Signs have been posted, mailed notices have been sent. The item has been posted on the internet and has been included in the newspaper for public input. Number four, whether the special exception is consistent with good principles of good zoning practice, including the purposes of the district in which the special exception would be located. We also consider existing and planned uses of surrounding land and the characteristics of the property involved. The specific purpose statements are in your package, I won't go over those. I will say that Jefferson Davis Highway, Mary Washington Boulevard, and Hospital Drive are the entrances to the city's only hospital, providing emergency and daily medical care of city residents. Commercial and institutional uses along these corridors adjacent to each of the proposed sign locations are present. Each, our existing signage is similar in height, size, and design of the proposed signs with the exception of the CT zone sites. Again, sign number eight would be located at the bottom of a steep slope, which would shield it from the adjacent Office Park and other uses. Sign number 10 is also proposed in the CT zoning district adjacent to Hospital Drive. Again, that's the main entrance to the hospital campus, and this location is kind of the entrance. It helps you decide if you're, where you need to be on the campus. The sign could assist patients and visitors with navigating the campus more efficiently. For each location, the special exception provides greater visibility for critical medical and emergency services, and as such represent principles of good zoning practice. Number five, whether the proposed use or aspect of the development requiring the special exception is special, extraordinary, or unusual. Mary Washington Hospital is a unique institutional partner of the city, providing critical medical and emergency services. These signs would assist with providing adequate visibility for the hospital at its three major entrances, which is an extraordinary situation unlikely to be encountered elsewhere in the city. And the last criteria, whether the proposed exception potentially results in any adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, the community in general, and if so, whether there are any reasonable conditions of approval that would satisfactorily mitigate such impacts. Signs 1, 2, and 8 would be positioned within the right-of-way adjacent to sidewalks. Taller signs nearer to the public infrastructure have the potential to loom over that public space. To address potential impacts for pedestrians and bicyclists, conditions were added to maintain a minimum clearance of 8 feet in height above the sidewalk and a minimum setback for the post of at least 2 feet from the sidewalk. In conclusion, the request for the special exceptions to accommodate signage to support Mary Washington Hospital requires a balanced recommendation from the Planning Commission. The signs are unique and extraordinary in that they are, that they are to facilitate navigation to critical medical care in emergency situations for an institutional partner of the city. However, allowing for signs that exceed height and size, deviate from lighting standards, and are installed in closer proximity to the public infrastructure does have some risk and impact. Staff does recommend approval of these applications with the conditions noted on your screen, such that signs 1, 2, 8, and 10 would all be constructed in substantial accordance with the application and the materials included with your package. For signs 1, 2, and 8, there's that added condition that the signs shall be installed and maintained with a minimum clearance of 8 feet above the public sidewalk and a minimum setback for the post of at least 2 feet from the public sidewalk. And for all application, or for all items, that the signs shall be erected within two years of approval of each special exception. There are four separate resolutions for you to take action on. Staff recommends approval of each, but you do need to take action on each individual resolution. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah, Marnie, the signs that you showed in our package and on screen, those are going to be the signs that they erect. They're not going to be putting any advertising for their pharmacy or wait times for their ER or any kind of lighting that, you know, with all the lights going across tunnel nuts, this and that. They're going to be static, basically. That's it. They're just going to point you to the campus and point you to ER. No other advertising or anything like that, right?
Yeah, the signs will be in general conformance with the application, and there will be no variable message component.
That's, thank you.
As for the two years, is there a reason not one year, not, or is that?
We have been using the two-year threshold more recently.
Okay.
I think that they are ready to go with putting these signs up there.
Okay.
If you wanted to reduce it to one year, I would say that's something to discuss with the applicant.
Okay. Because, yeah, I mean, looking at the sign, the temporary signs, I would like to get the new ones up quicker, as quick as possible.
So do they, probably.
Other questions from Ms. Sherman?
So, the use of the term substantial, the adjective substantial, what does that mean? And what's the enforcement aspect there? I mean, why do we have to use that? How come we just can't say constructed in accordance with? Why do we use substantial?
Depending on the grade at the site. I mean, it couldn't be any taller than 20 feet, but if somehow they needed to sink it a little bit lower in the ground because of some environmental or topographic feature out there, they could do that. If they wanted to reduce it by a little bit, for whatever reason, there's some flexibility there. But it really should look and appear just like you're approving today.
I have a question. On the special exceptions, are they permanent and run with the land?
They do.
And you said signs 1, 2, and 8 are on the public right-of-way?
That's correct.
I did not think that the city could give permanent rights in city property.
As part of the application, as it moves forward to City Council, there will be a lease that will be considered by City Council, which will explain the rights and terms of the use of the city right-of-way.
And do you have any idea what that might look like in terms of a length of time?
I don't have, that's not written. They do have an existing lease. I'm not sure what the duration is, but the city already went through this process with them on the previous signs in the right-of-way.
Yeah, because...
Usually it's 99 years. So usually it's 99 years.
Yeah, they came through 99 years. But anyway, but I think that's an important part of the application, because whatever reservations that the Planning Commission or Council might have about any of these signs, if it is subject to a lease, then that's something that, however down the road, whatever the terms of that lease are, if it's something that proves to be a problem, then the city would have the ability to make sure that the lease was not renewed, or if it got sold to somebody else and they had these signs up there and we didn't want them, then the city would retain that flexibility. So I think that's an important feature of the application. And I also, I take it that there is not and could not be a condition about limiting who would be able to use this, so it would run with the land so that any potential owner of it would have these four signs?
Right. We can't regulate it based on who owns the property, just anyone that owns the property.
Well, that's where your lease could come in and protect the city in some fashion, which we could do. Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present, would like to speak?
We are.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name's Brian Jenkins with Metacor Properties. I think Marnie did a great job explaining what we're trying to accomplish. Several years ago, I guess the decision was made to change how Mary Washington Boulevard functioned, and we lost a major signage point to bring the public into the main part of our campus. As a result, we scrambled around to try to figure out how to solve that, because as a community asset, a community good, and something people need to find in case of emergency, it was important to us as a health system and should be important to the community. And so I think this signage package through work that we engaged a national healthcare signage consultant among a much larger project about how we're bringing the public into our campus resulted in what you see today, and I think Marnie's done a good job explaining it. We tried to basically make the signs static, not a digital branding opportunity, which there was some pushback on, and we understand that. And we tried to make them look professional and nice for the surrounding community, and we tried to make them informative, and I think the goal was accomplished in the package we put forward. So that's where we are with it.
Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Do you think the word substantial does anything to what you're going to do out there?
I like it. I think, you know, it's, the signs still have to be manufactured and constructed. We haven't gone out there and staked out the property. We're going to build what you see, so.
Any other questions? I had one question, and that is, several of these signs are, I guess all three that are in the public right-of-way are extremely close to the road. Can you explain why there was a need for them to be that close?
So, let's just talk about the first two on Route 1, so the north and southbound Route 1. We currently have temporary signs, and I agree with you that if you went out and measured, they do sit, what you would call, close to the road by measurement. But I think they do what they're supposed to do, and they certainly don't infringe on traffic or road or sightlines on those roads, and these signs operate much in the same vein. We couldn't put them too far away from the road in either instance, because you fall down the hill of Mary Washington University on the northbound side, and on the southbound side, you're either into the sidewalk, or the canal, or the CVS parking lot. So where they're located, I think, is ultimately a necessity of where we could locate these to basically give people enough information to make a travel decision to turn. And so we located them so that the sightlines were such that people could see them, and if you put them too far away from where they are now, I don't think they worked from the geography and topography that we were dealing with. And up and down Route 1, I don't think it would have solved anything different as far as, you'd still have them pretty close to the road.
Would you happen to know whether there's any additional room on the Mary Washington University side to go back further from the right-of-way, from the street?
Well, the slope's about 2 to 1 there, so I don't, I don't think it serves a purpose because you're coming downhill. We have had some success with that temporary sign there, and the further you push it back away from the roadway, the closer the car has to get, and you've got two travel lanes that are very busy at all times, and people have to make a decision, come down pretty fast usually, towards downhill, towards that stoplight, and you have to be in a left lane to turn into our hospital campus. So we'd like to give people enough time to be able to see it and make that reaction.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak to this application should now come forward to the podium, and please give your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Would anyone like to address this application? I thought that's why everybody was here. Okay. So, going once, going twice. With that, I will close the public hearing. And what is the will of the Commission?
Chair, I'd like to start by making a motion recommending approval for the special exception for sign number one.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution for approval of sign number one? Hearing none, please cast your votes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Then going on to sign number two, uh, sign number, yeah, is that right? Sign number two.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of granting a special exception to Metacorp Properties for sign number two.
Second.
Okay, y'all got something going there. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please cast your votes.
And the ayes have it, six to zero.
And the next one would be sign number eight, correct? Is that right? Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for granting a special exception to Metacorp Properties for sign number eight.
I'll second that one, and I have one comment on the thing we have to approve here. It says that sign number eight is in R2 zoning. Sign number eight is, I think, in CT.
No, that's wrong.
Sound resolution. Yes.
Well, if you want to make that notation to have that corrected, we will do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion.
The resolution states that sign number two, or sign number eight is in R2 zoning.
Right.
It should be CT.
Thank you. With that correction, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. The motion has it, six to zero. And lastly, it would be sign number 10.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of granting a special exception to Metacorp Properties for sign number 10.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. See, we can do things very expeditiously when called. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is UDOTA 2017-05. The City of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 72-4 Use Standards and 72-5 Development Standards and Section 72-8 Definitions and Interpretations to create a new category of accessory use called limited residential lodging and to differentiate that use from the existing bed and breakfast use type. That, Mr. Craig, is recognized.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Airbnb and other hosting platforms have been a hot topic over the last few years. They've created infrastructure for a new type of use, and we're calling that a limited residential lodging. And also, they've created a new economy based on that use. We've debated this use at both the state and local level here with the City Council over the last two years. At the state level, after a year or two of debate, the General Assembly passed SB 1578 this year, preserving a locality's ability to regulate what we'll call limited residential lodging uses. Our current zoning ordinance does not differentiate between limited residential lodgings and commercial bed and breakfasts, and we saw a lot of bed and breakfast special use permit applications last year as a result. The conceptual ordinance we've provided in your packet would make this differentiation. It would define a limited residential lodging as an accessory use within an existing dwelling unit. The ordinance would also modify the bed and breakfast definition to clarify that it being more commercial in nature would be the principal use of the property. The limited residential lodging is proposed to be permitted in all zoning districts that permit dwelling units by right, and that use, the limited residential lodging, would be an accessory use of the dwelling unit. These would still require a business license to ensure the operator was paying all required transient and business taxes. The business license would require a zoning permit, which would ensure adherence to the standards that we'll talk about here in the next couple of paragraphs. A limited residential lodging would be required to be operated by a resident of the unit, who would be required to provide and maintain current contact information. That's one use standard. It's actually two. The use could not be in an accessory structure, couldn't be out in your shed or in a room over your garage or anything like that. Could not have public assembly uses, such as receptions, weddings, funerals, parties, other events. Those would be prohibited. There are three other standards that we'll talk through real quick. When we went to the work session with the City Council on this proposed ordinance, they had specific questions about these three and wanted us to discuss them individually. The first is the limit on bedrooms and occupants. It was originally proposed at three bedrooms and up to six occupants. The question was, should it be lowered to two bedrooms and four occupants? The city's occupancy rule limits occupancy of a dwelling unit to one family, and that family can have up to two boarders. And in looking at this, trying to keep the impacts relatively the same between the accessory, home occupation, limited residential use, lodging use, and another typical dwelling unit, we think that reducing the number of rooms that may be occupied from three to two brings the proposed use into general conformance with that occupancy standard. If a resident wanted to operate a more intensive use, they can apply for the proper zoning for a bed and breakfast stand. In our lower residential zoning districts, that would be a special use permit, and in more commercial areas, that is a by-right use in some instances. So that's the first standard to talk through. The second, should there be a maximum number of nights per year the lodging may be rented? Throughout the year, thinking about a typical dwelling unit, residents have overnight guests, they have family visits. Generally, if added together, the total volume of these visits could reasonably be a total of a couple of weeks. On the flip side, there is a legitimate concern that permitting the transient rental of a property for 365 days all year long, no limitation, could be used to circumvent established occupancy rules. How many people actually live here? Well, someone could claim I'm just the occupant of a limited residential lodging. So what we're suggesting, what we have proposed here, is limiting total stays to 90 days, maximum, for the year. And that will ensure that the volume of overnight guests at a residence with or without a limited residential lodging could generally comparably be the same. The third standard to talk through, should parking be required for this use, and if so, how and where? Originally, we had proposed a parking standard, thinking that it, like a bed and breakfast, should have a parking space per room. Then we kind of dove into these details after some public comment at one of the council work sessions. The existing zoning ordinance has parking exemptions for the older areas of the city. Older lots, older structures are generally exempt. And one purpose of these exemptions is to recognize that applying parking standards to the city's historical development pattern would render existing residential uses, existing homes, within the city unusable from a zoning standpoint. If we had, in order to live in a house, if you had to provide all the parking that's required in a new development, you just couldn't live in a house. There are areas of the city, like the one that we showed in the packet, the Rising Sun Tavern neighborhood, where the buildings are very close together, there's on-street parking, but there's no alternate access. They can't physically provide any additional housing. With the use standards proposed, we're limiting the number of bedrooms to the general occupancy standard, limiting the total number of rentable days down to 90, prohibiting assembly and special events, big traffic generators, light and noise. The amount of parking required by the proposed limited residential lodging use actually generated wouldn't be out of conformance with the general amount of parking required or generated by a typical dwelling unit. So that's driven our recommendation that for this lower-level use, no additional parking requirement be applied. We do recommend approval of the ordinance in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mike, for the B&Bs, it's pretty easy to establish where they are. They advertise, I mean, they have signs on their house or whatever. But how do we do, deal with the Airbnb? Are we using terms like Mr. Pace had recognized neighbors dropping a dime on them, or what? How do we know? I know that some people have come in and asked for their special use or whatever, but how do we know that they're doing this for two nights or three nights and, you know, doing it as a business, and we're not getting the tax, the tax revenue we're supposed to get?
Well, and we are a small government, so a lot of our enforcement is complaint-driven, and that's one of the reasons for the 90-day standard. If it's excessive, there will be complaints, and then we'll have that check. It may not be excessive, and people may not notice, but this does, right now, people are operating these things on different platforms in the City of Fredericksburg. I mean, they're doing it. This will require that you actually do get a zoning permit, and it's hopefully an easy enough process that most people will go through that.
If we caught them, if we had this ordinance and we discovered that somebody is, you know, violating the rules, would they be fined? Would they simply be not allowed to do that? What's the penalty?
They'd be subject to the enforcement provisions in the UDOT, so, you know, you would get fines potentially or other court enforcement actions, injunctions.
Thank you very much.
Mike, a couple of questions. You've got under the table, limited residential lodging requires a resident manager. Does that mean that someone has to live in the house while they're renting it to others? What exactly does that mean?
No, sir, we didn't mean that. What we meant was that someone who lives there, it's their primary residence, and this is something we'll work out on the application, proof of occupancy that you actually live there, is the person advertising it and running it, that you can't just buy a bunch of properties and have de facto hotels.
Okay. And then, follow-up on that. The second part was, you had mentioned earlier that you're not allowed to do this in a, an accessory use. So if you had a nice outbuilding behind your place, you couldn't rent that. What's the reason for that?
It puts people out in another space. Typically, it's more of a higher-intensity use, I guess. And that's the theory, and that's what we've proposed. It's more of a, this is just lower, supposed to be lower intensity, and that's one way to ensure that it's lower intensity. It's in your house, it's in your control, things aren't kind of spreading out all over your yard.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for you, and I noticed in the memo that you didn't talk any about the state legislation. I just today got a copy of Senate Bill 1578, but I haven't had a chance to go through it very well. What I was interested in is, under the state law, what's our range of options? What are we allowed to do?
Zoning rules. And they don't restrict. I guess that's one thing.
This bill's 10 pages long.
A lot of it is very small amendments to a very large section about bed and breakfast and alcohol licensing and stuff like that. And basically, I think that boils down to bed and breakfasts and Airbnbs or whatever, they all have to follow the same alcohol rules. Then you get to the meat of the bill, and it's, it does two things. It allows the locality to establish a registry, taxation purposes, and then it permits, it enables the locality to use their zoning to regulate the use. That's actually a very short section of the bill. There was a lot of bills proposed that had a lot of language about a lot of requirements with insurance and other things, and I think smartly, the General Assembly went with a simpler bill.
And we don't, let's see, we don't, we do have, yeah, I haven't gone through the city code thing. Following up some on what Mr. Beavers was asking, in terms of enforcement, how does that work as far as taxation goes?
Well, if they're not paying their taxes?
Well, I mean, the whole Airbnb thing, a lot of it is to evade taxes, to not pay any taxes on this additional income that you're getting. I mean, that's why people are, a lot of them are doing it. And it's my understanding that this legislation was designed to give localities a means of requiring through a business license and taxation to be able to collect revenue on this income. And I was wondering, how does the city propose to do that?
You outlined that very well, sir. A business license, zoning permit.
Well, no.
And let me add some more meat to that, I guess. Typically, when you get a business license, that's when you are registered for all of your taxes, and that's when the system is set up, or they're generally already set up, and I guess the Commissioner of Revenue will be working on putting this together. I think it's just typical transient taxes. I don't think it's anything new. They'll register for their zoning permit as a requirement of their building, business license, and then they'll have to pay the appropriate taxes, I think.
And so at the end of the year, whenever, they'll say, well, I rented two rooms for 38 nights and one room for 14 nights, and this is what I got in income?
And that's, like with a restaurant, I mean, how that would work too, I think, right? I'm not sure, I don't, you may know about more than I do about this, but...
These types of things are often hard to enforce.
I was going to ask about the tax situation. How is the business tax assessed to these people? Is it a percentage of their gross, or is it a flat fee?
That's a good question, Dr. Grass. I don't know. It's the, whatever the transient tax is, I think, is how that will be handled, but I don't...
Isn't there a business licensing tax, or do we get rid of that one? I think it's...
You're right, and it has to do with gross sales. And if there's a base fee and then a certain amount, you do pay a percentage. I don't know those numbers.
Yeah, then there's an occupancy tax right on top, that you charge when there's a visitor there, they get, add on to their bill, occupancy tax.
Yeah, so would this be taxed like a hotel? I mean, it's...
Yeah, right.
It's not the lodging tax, is it?
Or lodging tax, yeah, that's what I mean, lodging tax.
Is it the same thing?
I should have better answers for you. I focused on the zoning part, and the tax structure is in place for it.
I guess the other part of this is, I was wondering, how much of a record-keeping paperwork burden are we putting on people who want to rent out a room every so often? I mean, they're going to have to keep records. We say that they can have no more than 90 days out of the year, so presumably, they have to have records to show how many times they've rented the room during that year, and presumably, we would have the ability to check those records once in a while to make sure they're not exceeding the limits. What would be, how do we do that?
And again, I mean, that's, that will be baked into the tax collection process, so it'll be a paperwork trail that exists, and that'll be a tool that we'll use if there's a problem.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how big of a burden we're putting on people for doing this relatively small kind of business.
They have to keep track of their taxes, Mr. Grass.
Well, I know that's federal, I mean, if they make money, they got to pay the feds and the state for that matter.
It's the same burden. I mean, they have to keep track of how many nights that they rented their room for the tax purposes and for zoning. It's the same record.
I just wanted, like I say, I just kind of care concerned about the amount of paperwork burden we're putting on people for a relatively small kind of business here.
But that's their choice, and it's a tax burden. If we're going to have taxes, as the chairman's indicated, then they got to keep the records.
I also had a question about public notice. When somebody comes in for a special use permit or zoning or a special exception, they have to, there is public notice for people who live nearby. I assume that that is not the case with a home occupation, is it?
Nope.
Okay. So in other words, this will be like a home occupation, and that anybody can start doing this, and their neighbors probably won't know about it.
They are not required to notify them, no, sir.
What about subdivisions, let's say, that have restrictive covenants that prevent commercial uses of the residences? This is a commercial use, and yet you're, you live in one of these subdivisions that has that kind of restrictive covenant, and you're not allowed to operate a laundry out of your house, but the people next door you discover are renting out their rooms every weekend without any knowledge on the part of the residents of that subdivision.
And we don't enforce homeowner covenants. I mean, that's...
I know you don't, but they, but these people won't know about it.
Well, they wouldn't know about it in any kind of violation of a homeowners' association covenants until they occur. This is no... This is no different than any other situation.
Well, no, but, but it's unlike if they needed a special use permit, then, then the neighbors would be on notice that this was being proposed next door to them.
Well, home occupations are allowed...
I know, but I'm, but that's my point, is that this is not like a home occupation.
And what we're trying to do is to draw a line in terms of intensity, and I appreciate your point, Dr. Gratz, how much paperwork, how many loopholes are we gonna make, hoops, make someone jump through to do this lower-level intensity use? And that's really what we've tried to tie our standards to. I mean, what is the level of activity that's comparable to what's occurring in a single-family home now? What level of activity might you not notice, you know, that won't impact your life, that, you know, doesn't require a lot of public thought? And that's, where we're trying to draw a line, it was some direction that we got during our processes last year, where people were going through special use permits to do this kind of lower-level intensity use. And the option is always still there, and the requirement is always still there, that if you get more intense to where you may impact your neighbors, from a city level, not, I don't know about homeowners association, that's off our radar, but from a city level, that you do have to get the higher zoning approval, and that's, in often cases, would be special use permit.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions for staff? If not, then we'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to the, to the proposed ordinance should come forward to the podium. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff. My name is Jerry Stokes. I live at 600 Lewis Street on a corner of Winchester and Lewis, across the street from Kenmore. My wife, Ellen, and I have an Airbnb. We've had it for quite some time. We have a one-room unit with two twin beds. We have parking in front of our house. We have four slots on Winchester with the residential pass, and we have two off-street parking places. We have an average of three to four visitor nights per month. We have an eclectic home that was on the Christmas tour. Our guests really love our home. They love the neighborhood, the access to Restaurant Row, and the historical places in our neighborhood. Our Airbnb falls within the parameters of those laid out in the proposed ordinance modification. I was very much opposed to the original process we had that was going to require us to go through a special use permit for such a small operation. So I'm very pleased with what the staff came up with, with what's being recommended, and I fully support it. Now, there are some questions that perhaps, since I've got some experience with this, that I might be able to answer in terms of the burden, which I certainly appreciate, but the way the Airbnb operation works is that, that when somebody rents our room, it goes through their, their process. I get a printout, it would take two minutes at the most to have a printout by, by month or by year of our income from the Airbnb. My wife and I have had, it's no longer active, but we've had a small business in our house for art, her art business for quite some time, and it, we already have a license for that, but what I would have to do is submit the, our income on a quarterly basis to the state, and, you know, I could have said, "We didn't sell anything this month," but it's not going to be any different for the city of Fredericksburg than it was for us submitting our sales tax on our art business. There is a way that, if the city chose to do so, Airbnb will monitor the, the amount of use of each individual unit and, and report that back to the city, but you have to go into some kind of agreement with them. Now, during the state-level discussions about this, Airbnb actually proposed to the state of Commonwealth of Virginia that they would do that. For every Airbnb, Airbnb, Airbnb operation in the state of Virginia, they would collect the information, they would also collect the revenue and send it back to the state. Now, it would seem like it was a slam dunk to me for the state to do that, but they chose not to do that. So now, the burden is on the state of, on the back of each individual locality to keep track of it, and it really comes down to a, to a voluntary kind of thing, I guess, unless you, unless you go through the process of working with Airbnb so that they notify, so they would actually collect the taxes and send them to the state to look out.
Interesting.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
We don't normally...
Oh, okay.
...have exchanges with the speakers.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the, to the ordinance? If not, then I'll close the, the public hearing, and what's the will of the commission?
I have a, I have a quick question. I don't know if we're voting, or a recommendation tonight or not, but it would be interesting, gentleman said Airbnb does some reporting, and I'm just wondering if as part of this process, if you could require anyone who does get that permit to submit the annual report from Airbnb, whether or not that would be helpful to the city to put that burden on the folks who do rent spaces out to provide that report to us to help cross-check that? Just an idea, I don't, I don't know any, that's the first I've heard that they could do that.
We can't rely on all these operations being literally Airbnb, so I...
I understand.
But, but if we put a twist on that, though, because you, you have gone out and you have surveyed Airbnb, but have, have you gone to, I mean, you surveyed the website, but you haven't gone to Airbnb for a reporting purpose, at least to start this? Because, I mean, like you said, there are variances of private, but a lot of folks are doing Airbnb. So could you not ask Airbnb to say, "Hey, in this zip code, what do you, what do you have?" Because you may have some folks who haven't even put in for a business license.
I don't, I don't know that we can go to a third party and, and have them share information about their customers. I don't think we can do that. We can go online and see who is advertising and see, you know, who's doing that in the 22401 zip code, but we cannot go to the Airbnb organization and say, "Please tell us who your constituent members are." We cannot go to a business and say, "Tell us who your, who your customers or clients or, or franchisees," or however you want to phrase it, who they are.
But have you gotten any feedback from the Commissioner of Revenue on this, on this ordinance?
She's delighted we'll have a system in place to, to be able to enforce something. I mean, we, we would have a system, and she is brought to our attention of, of operations that she wishes that she was able to collect revenue on. And now, through this mechanism, the zoning administrator will contact them and say, "You're, you know, we noticed that you're advertising, we have, and you're only, if you're only doing one or two rooms, it's something administratively, get yourself legal." It, it is very off-putting for folks, I know you may, hope this, you don't take this personally, but people find it off-putting to come before the planning commission and the city council for, for some of these operations, particularly smaller ones, that, that they feel that's a bit, that's, they feel the burden's something. So the Commissioner of Revenue's delighted we have a system.
Chuck, I have a question. I mean, you said rather emphatically that you do not think that we could engage with Airbnb to get the information they provide, or could provide. Could you at least see if that is definitely true, or if they're willing to do something voluntarily?
We can ask them, but it's gonna be proprietary information, and I don't think they're gonna wanna share.
Well, let's find out.
The, the other issue I think is important that Chuck brought up was that, that's the big provider now.
Right, I understand.
This is gonna change, and I wouldn't want to structure a zoning ordinance around what they're doing right now. It will certainly be an enforcement tool that we can keep in mind, regardless of whether the ordinance is structured that way or not.
I wasn't saying anything about the zoning ordinance. I was just thinking about getting more information that'll allow us to maybe find out who are the providers of the Airbnb in their city.
I was wondering if the city or the Commissioner of Revenue or anybody has any idea how many people are currently operating Airbnb businesses in the city without a special use permit?
Well, we did our survey in June 2015, 2016, 2016, eight.
So we still...
And if this mechanism is put into place, then we would reiterate that, that search and, and have this mechanism available.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't know about how other people feel, but I think, I would like to take a closer look at this and hopefully not have to vote on it this evening. I think, I have some questions that I'd like to, to ask of the Commissioner of Revenue about how it would work, and, and I, and I also really wonder about providing some sort of public notice. When somebody comes in right now, is it, I was trying to remember, for, for a special exception or variance, isn't there, or some kind of administrative exceptions that you all grant? You just put out a notice or something, and it's not to individual property owners? How does that, what's that for?
There, there's a lower-level variance, and, and site plans too, you know, where you do notify your neighbors for a public comment period. Those are more intense than what's being proposed here. This really is in line with a home occupation, which is a, a simple home occupation permit form that we have online, I mean, that we, a process that we have available, and it doesn't require any notice. We think that's the simplest way to do it.
It might not seem intense to you, but if you live next door in an apartment with somebody doing this, I think it could be very intense. Or if there are restrictive covenants on your property, I think you'd wanna know about it.
Would that not be why we wanna have this zoning measure in the first place, so that, as they said earlier, the complaints bring that forward? So we want the zoning aspect so that somebody could begin the actionable process, be it the, the revenue side or the zoning working with the revenue side?
Well, but this essentially would not be a zoning matter. We'd be allowing it by right everywhere.
Currently by right?
No, it's not.
Yeah, there's nothing to prohibit somebody from using Airbnb today.
The people, when we sent these letters out, this is a little bit of background, we got pushback from some individuals, and Mr. Stokes included, who asserted that they had a right to do this. And no one ever tested that before the Board of Zoning Appeals or anything else, which I'm, I'm glad for. We've taken the time to work this process out to kind of meet that lower-level need. We're very confident in it, and it provides structure to the bottom of the market. I think that that's what we're trying to, to achieve here. But yeah, people said it was an interesting debate, and we didn't have all the answers. And I, I don't know how it would've gone if it had been, if we had enforced something on someone without this kind of stuff in place, and, and someone had pushed their arguments, because there were good ones on both sides.
I mean, to me, this is, it's, it's very similar to Uber, that, you know, where you have an alternative economy and people using their resources, whether it's a home or whether it's an automobile, to, to get additional income. And I think that, obviously, it's, it's driven by economics, that people use Uber because it's cheaper than a cab, okay? And they use Airbnb a lot of times because it's cheaper than a hotel room. And so, I mean, there's, it's certainly understandable, and it serves a real need. But on the other hand, there's a real reason why taxis are regulated, and, and why zoning uses like this are regulated. So I mean, I, like you say, I think there are arguments, good arguments on, on both sides, but I think it's something that we need to be very careful about. Did people have comments on, on the two issues that, that Mike raised about the numbers? And what was the other thing?
It was the three. It would be the, the occupancy limit, number of rooms, number occupants.
Yeah, number of rooms.
Maximum number of nights, and then parking requirement.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts on those issues? Because the ordinance that we have in our packet, how is that worded?
I think we went ahead and made the change.
You made the change?
We added in the, let me say it another way. The rooms limit would be two, the total occupants would be four.
I see.
The maximum number of night stay would be 90. There would be no parking required.
Gotcha.
Additional from what's required for your single-family home, or your apartment, or townhome, or wherever it is.
Okay. So, any, any discussion on those items? Yeah? What's the will of the commission?
Well, Mr. Pates, you're asking us to defer this so you can get more information from Lois, is that what you're...
That's part of it, and I wanted to explore this notion some more about providing notice to neighbors.
But I, I guess I'm still in a quandary as to, that's execution, and we're just talking about the aspect of the zoning. So is that, is that gonna be influential to the zoning and changing what we have before us right now?
The, oh, that's a good question. I mean, the, the ordinance that we, that we have before us doesn't do anything on the taxation issue, so...
That, that wouldn't, that, that will not fall under the ordinance purview of zoning. Taxation is a separate kind of animal.
Oh, I know, but I mean, do you think that the city would be contemplating a separate action and separate ordinance dealing with the taxation issue?
I believe the taxes are already in place.
So it would come under our existing lodging tax?
Yes, sir.
Which is interesting, I didn't know that. Oh, that was the kind of stuff that I was wanting to ask, talk to Lois about.
Considering Mr. Pates' concerns and whatever, and I don't think there's a rush on this, I'd move that we table this until our next meeting so he can get additional information, and anybody else who wants additional information as far as that goes.
And please clarify, what information are we missing at this point?
But we took, took care of one part.
Yeah, I thought that was the big, I thought that was the big one.
Well, I don't know, no, I don't think that is taken care of.
If you wish to, we could add the notice provision.
Yeah, comparable to, to the other administrative reviews that we have, that can be added, if that's included in the motion.
Let me just clarify, you're talking about notifying somebody, but it's not a requirement that you have to go through a use permit or anything like that?
No, no, no.
They just simply get the info.
For the other, for other applications, you notice the immediately adjacent, immediately adjacent property owners 21 days, I believe it is, before an approval is given.
That's administrative.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I wonder how that would work if you had, if, if you were living in a 20-unit apartment building? You wouldn't be providing notice to anybody in the building, so you'd be talking about an adjacent property owner. These, these are the kind of things I was trying to, myself, have a little bit more time to explore. I'm not sure how it would work.
What would the rule be? You bring up a good point. So a renter wants to rent it out, I guess it's subletting. What is the rule in the city of Fredericksburg?
They would have to get the, their own, the property owner to, to agree to it.
Yeah.
And, and so the owner would have to become a signatory to it.
Yeah.
So the owner would then have the obligation to, to contact, you know, if he, if he or she wished to, you know, any of the lessees, and, and we would then notice the adjacent properties as well, so...
Okay. I'm, I'm just gonna throw that out. If I'm renting to somebody, I'm probably gonna put in the, the rules that you can't do this. I, that's gonna be my guess. I mean, I don't, I'd love opinions of people here, so in that situation, I don't think it's really applicable that an apartment renter is gonna be able to do that. But again, I will defer to others.
In San Francisco and Manhattan, probably, but here, no, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
Chuck, if you were, wanna rent your single-family home out, you move away, you wanna rent it, are there any notice provisions?
No, sir. Just out of curiosity, did my motion die for lack of a second?
Yes, is, is there a second for the, for the motion that's been made? Hearing none, motion fails, and so what's the commission want to do?
I mean, myself personally, again, I, unless I'm, I'm not hearing a, while we're waiting, I would propose to accept the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment to define the limited residential lodging and accessory use, and to amend the definition of bed and breakfast that has been proposed. I would like to vote on that.
And with the administrative notice that Chuck has mentioned?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, so to clarify that addition, the...
We would notify adjacent property owners 21 days before a decision is rendered.
To issue the zoning permit for...
Yes.
The use.
That would be to the adjacent property owners 21 days before the permit was issued.
Right.
I think that, I think that would make a difference for me, I think. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion passed. Well, I tell you, there's a lot of... Well, I tell you, there's a lot of unanimity around here tonight. Motion passes six, zero.
Well, it's because of you, Mr. Pates.
That's right. Okay. Moving right along. Under, under new business, we have the, which is not a public hearing item, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Oh, that's right. You took away our public hearing right on this. Agenda item number seven is preliminary plat 2017-02. SL Nussbaum Realty Company proposes a preliminary subdivision plat for 78 townhomes at 30 Briscoe Lane. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have a computer, please. SL Nussbaum, as you stated, proposes to develop approximately 11 acres into 78 single family attached lots generally shown on your screen. It is in conformance with the general development plan approved by city council in November of last year. The site is shown, tried to highlight generally where the, the townhomes are proposed on the top left of the screen. So you see Wegmans across the street, Fall Hill Avenue. You see Briscoe Lane on the left. The leg running up the right of the property is the future Noack Lane, car dealerships and then the existing or, or under development Phase One of the Hamptons at Noble Project. Access to the lots from Fall Hill Avenue is from Briscoe Lane at the bottom of the screen and then from Noack Lane, which is at the top of the GDP. There's also cross access from Noble Way, which is off screen to the, to the north, maybe to the east directionally, but to the north of your screen, along Shadmore Drive, which is the public, proposed public road bordering the townhomes to the left and then Islip Lane, which is a proposed private street with public access to the right of the townhomes. The technical review committee has completed their review of the preliminary plat. The roads, utilities and amenities are all in conformance with city standards in the approved GDP. The GDP included greens in front of lots 12 through 21, which are at kind of the top left, and 22 through 33, which are in that same block, but over to the right of the screen. And in order to include the greens and to maximize their size, the application does require two technical code modifications, which are ultimately approvable by the city council. Lots 12 through 21 and 22 through 33 do not technically front on a street. So along that blue line you see on the screen, they front generally on that green space. Similarly, the alleys shown in orange, illustrated by the orange lines, serving the development are proposed to be 20 feet wide instead of the required 24 foot wide. I thought I'd included the Idlewild alley standard on the screen. I know I included it in your packet. I'll just refer to it in your packet. What you see on page three of the packet is what was approved at Idlewild. It's a 20-foot wide easement, so the actual travelway is a little bit smaller than that. That really should be our modern standard. Alleys in the downtown are 10 feet. We've had some experience with this 24-foot alley standard now and, and we're finding more and more that, that this is becoming an exception request and, and some instances, I think like we talked about earlier, if it's the sole access, absolutely it should be 24-foot wide. But Idlewild has served as a great example of what it, what a city alley could and should be. We've done the technical analysis with Public Works and the Fire Department to ensure that all the, all the public city vehicles, general public will have adequate access and, and we're all in support of the proposed amendment. And the purpose of both of these amendments is to implement these greens. It was, it was a positive in the rezoning application to kind of have these networks of, of open spaces and greens in the general development plan and this, these are the technical modifications that are required to approve those at this level. Due to state code requirements, this item will be held open for public hearing on the city council's August 8th agenda. There's that 60-day review timeline. I think I've covered everything doing a Ms. Sherman impression, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
And Chuck? I read somewhere sometime and maybe years ago that as alleys got bigger, people drove faster on them.
Absolutely.
So isn't that a, isn't a better reason to shrink the, the width of them?
That, that's one of many. More asphalt, less green space, speed, garbage accumulating, you know, you keep them, keep them smaller.
Okay. And I've read that the Fire Department's fine with the.
Yes, sir. We did the turn. We did all, all the auto turn checks on all the radii and made sure that it was passable. I think the applicant actually added additional width into their streets in order to ensure even better access for fire trucks on the main streets.
The question about declaring some of those units to, to allow them to front on something other than a street. As I look at this, it makes no sense to me why we have to have five units turned 90 degrees. Why not just turn them 90 degrees? Eliminate one unit. So you're going to eliminate one sale, one unit. Then you'd have that whole line of units that would be parallel to the line of units that are on Novak Lane. They'd be parallel to it. They would then be facing whatever the Sag Harbor Lane. So all it is is a matter of turning five units 90 degrees, eliminating one down to four units and you eliminate that one issue. I don't like the narrow alleys, but that's.
Yes, sir. I understand your comment and I'll let the applicant respond to that. There is an open space easement in between those townhomes. It's about, there's a dimension on there that I can't quite read, but it's between 30 and 40 feet. I know I've got it here somewhere. And what we looked at, while we're okay with it, if you are familiar with the townhomes across from Kenmore Park, Memorial Park, they have a similar layout, but they only have 13 feet in between the houses there and the sidewall. This is 30 to 40 feet. We thought it was an okay extension of the green space, but again, I'll, I'll let the applicant answer.
Well, it just seems to me that this whole project that has very little green space, that whole block of units down there that are just next to Briscoe Lane and the ones all along there, there's no green space in there at all to mount anything. And there's a little bit of green space in this other part. And by eliminating one unit, you'd actually get a bit more green space by turning those units 90 degrees.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting comment because some, the, the, is it called the muse on Kenmore?
I don't know.
I think it's called Kenmore Muse, I think.
Okay.
Those townhomes down there across from the park are extremely nice and I, I think the design is, is really excellent and, and the fact that it is situated perpendicular to the street, I think adds a positive dimension to that. But on the other hand, Dr. Gratz is right. You couldn't get much less open space in a project than what we see here. And, and in fact, the, 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 the open space that's along Shadmore Drive is, is where it is, you know, a triangular piece that, that may be difficult to, to, to situate as many homes on if you built up to that. What is, what is the open space, minimum open space requirement for a project like this and how much do they have?
Let me see. I think it's 25% and they exceed it. And what you don't see here.
How could that be?
Well, what you, what you don't see is that to the south, to the right of the page, there, there are bigger open spaces in between the apartment complex and, and this townhome development and.
Oh, so you, so it doesn't count for this piece?
This is just the preliminary plat, the technical approval to subdivide these lots. So that, those portions of the open space are, are off the page, basically. I mean, they're all still there. I'm looking desperately for my plat here.
Well, wasn't a big chunk of the open space this huge Stormwater Pond?
Uh, it's a component, but I think, let me see if we can.
That was further to the east, Mr. Chairman. The, the open space immediately to, to the right of this screen is, is all usable open space.
Yeah, the, yeah, Chuck said it very well.
Where is that?
It's a, it's a network down the, it's not shown on here because it's not part of this actual subdivision, like the literal subdivision. Okay, but if you look at page nine of 11, you'll start to see a big area of open space, denotes proposed open space between the multifamily buildings and the townhomes. That's part of a, between the two projects, a central spine of open space. So it was kind of like a little network of open spaces that went through the site.
I thought on.
I'm on nine of 11.
I thought those were apartment buildings or something.
No, that's a clubhouse. I'll let the applicant explain what those are. It's a clubhouse and a pool. And then there's open green on the next project up. So it was a pretty well-defined network through there. That was again, reasons why we supported it from its general layout.
But that's not part of this application?
This is just the preliminary plat. It's the technical approval for the 78 lots and, and that's why we're kind of limited in our technical analysis of it from a staff standpoint. We did kind of the value judgment with the rezoning. This generally conforms to the GDP. It meets our technical standard.
So that, that would have been the time to address that really?
Yes, sir.
In terms of the open space and where it is and blah, blah, blah?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's passed.
Is, is there anything that would stop them from changing the other phases? I mean, they get approval on this phase.
Oh, no, sir. They'd have to get another rezoning.
The GDP.
Yeah.
I guess they could come in to amend the GDP is what.
They could, but they have to come back to you, Mr. Pates.
That would be tough, wouldn't it? Okay. Any, any other comments or questions?
I guess the one comment I would, I would say is I, I would, you know, when you, when I look at townhouses, I'm looking at, again, we're trying to, a livable, a livable city. And I don't see, unless there's plans that I'm not seeing, to connect this like to the Wegmans, you know, that we can, that pedestrian traffic. This seems very landlocked with, you're going to get around by a car.
Good question. And keep in mind, this is a developing area and what you see here are the bones for an interconnected fabric. It's been a big deal with this application.
Okay.
They do have offsite improvements that aren't shown here. I think there's a crosswalk across Gordon Shelton. There's a connection, sidewalk connection to Central Park. Those are kind of the big existing, you know, elements along the streetscape that you'll see. But this connectivity, one of the biggest deals, Steve, was Islip Lane. That lines up with, with a path through to Central Park. It's been a big deal for us. They've been putting public access easements. They're required to put public access easements over this private street so that it serves as a general public passageway and, and with the next property developing, it's another thing that we'll pursue, trying to keep, keep pushing that link, you know, parallel to Fall Hill Avenue into Central Park.
The applicant has agreed to provide some pedestrian enhancements across Fall Hill at the Gordon Shelton.
Okay.
Intersection. We had some discussion with Public Works about trying to provide some pedestrian cross connections on Fall Hill between Gordon Shelton and Noble and they strongly discouraged that. They, they did not want to encourage mid-block pedestrian activity.
Okay.
There, that was just their preference.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve, approve or a motion to recommend approval of preliminary subdivision plat for this project based on staff's recommendation.
This would be the resolution, right?
I would like to second that.
Right. It doesn't say resolution at the top, but I guess it is a resolution.
Resolution 1X dash blank.
Yeah, oh, there it is. Yeah, yeah, okay. So the motion's been made to approve the resolution, resolution that's in the, your packet. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Do, do we want to hear from the applicant or do we feel like it's? Okay. Okay.
I mean, if we, if you felt there was a real need to, we could, I suppose, but normally we wouldn't. Mr. Payne always likes to talk, but you know, do you really want to give, give him an opportunity?
He's only here.
Fair enough.
He's only here for the billable hours, right?
We don't want to extend this too long.
If all I have to do is avoid making a case, you do not.
Okay. No, any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Motion passes, passes three to two.
Four, four to two.
I'm, you're right. I'm sorry, four to two. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number eight, the general public comment. This period is provided at each regular meeting for comments by citizens regarding any matter related to commission business. It's not listed on the agenda for public hearing. The chair will request that speakers observe the three-minute time limit and yield the floor when the clerk indicates that their time has expired and no dialogue between speakers will be permitted. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission during this general public comment period?
Good evening. My name is Theron Keller, 1108 Winchester, 22401. During one of the agenda items tonight, as I reviewed it, I made an observation that brings forth a suggestion for you. The city throughout the UDO makes several references to lots that were of record prior to April 24th, 1984. However, I'm not aware of any easy, quick, convenient way for citizens to know which lots those are. So for those of us who have been around a while, we know that Idlewild and the preserves are certainly post 1984 and most of the downtown and most of the existing neighborhoods are pre 1984. My suggestion is it might be helpful to somehow get the city's GIS staff to make an indication in the record and perhaps even create one of their really nifty little maps that have color coding to show which area of the cities, which areas of the city are the pre 1984 lots that are exempt from a lot of these regulations and which ones are the newer ones that are not. So, thank you.
That's an interesting suggestion.
Very good suggestion.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak, address the commission? If not, we'll close the general public comment period. Moving on to other business, agenda item nine is planning commissioner comments. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to add this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I'm going to send to Rob, I don't know if you've seen it, but VDOT has put out their new aerial overviews of the safety improvements at intersection at, at 95 and Route 3. I don't know if y'all have seen those, but there are some fairly significant changes that are being contemplated at that intersection. I have a copy here if any of you would like to look at it tonight, but I will send the PDFs to Rob and so you can take a look at them in your own time if you can, but.
Yeah, that could be included in our next packet. That would be.
I think it's a good idea, but I, when I get information from you, I forward them to you guys, so I think you've already seen them already, but it's good to do it again because you mean.
I didn't get this from you all. I mean, this is a new one that was.
Oh, this is the revised one?
This is a one that I, I was told that they had modified their.
Oh, okay.
Intersection improvements.
Okay.
From what they had proposed. I don't know what the prior version is, but it was different than the one I had seen prior.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
It may be duplicate, but doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt to look at it again.
Sure, sure, sure.
Any other comments? I had two. One is if in the future we get plans like the ones we had tonight, if, if they could be provided to us or the applicant could provide copies to us that are, that are full, full-size sheets, these are almost impossible to read. They're so small, so just pass that along. The other thing is, one of the things we didn't get a chance to, to talk about tonight in our work session and that I asked Mike today to do, everybody should have gotten, did everybody get these?
Yeah.
Yeah. You should have gotten this at your desk tonight. This, this is a very important chart and I'm glad that he provided that to us in a blown-up state because now we can read it. But, but what this does is, is talk about the zoning changes that are contemplated under this, under the new area plans. And this is kind of where the rubber meets the road is, is when you really look at this, you'll see what the impact of these proposed zoning changes would be. And, and I just had to, I would, I would encourage everybody to, to try to study that chart a little bit before our next discussion about the area plans. But I, I did have one question on it that I, I noticed that there was, you know, the current CT and the new CT.
Yes, sir.
Then you had the current CH and the new CH, but nothing, no new commercial shopping center.
One of the proposals, well, we wouldn't change commercial shopping center as it exists, but one of the proposals in the area plan is to convert CSC land to CH. They're, they're like redundant zoning category and they have these weird nuanced differences that are detrimental to CH property. And so we've just kind of taken the good parts of CSC, put, put them into CH and we'll do away with commercial shopping center.
Aha, so it's being eliminated.
That, that's the, the thought. And you'll remember there were maps in the end of your zoning packet, the whole packet that we sent you all. And that'll show you the extent of zoning changes and you'll see that there's no CSC proposed in those areas anymore. see that there's no CSC proposed in those areas anymore.
Thank you for explaining that because I was a little confused about that. Okay, that's good.
I would add, Mr. Chairman, just as an informational about that, once we change, if the CSC properties in these two areas are shifted over to highway commercial, the only remaining shopping center zoning that's under private ownership is the shopping center on Cowan Boulevard just west of the hospital, whose name I can't think of, where there's several medical offices and the Italian restaurant there. That's the only. And as we go through the planning process, you know, we'd probably be shifting that one over as well to highway commercial. There was some suggestion when we reviewed this by the city attorney, says, well, if that's the only one that's left, let's just go ahead and change that one, too. So we might, we might just do that, too, so.
And I don't know what this stood for. On the last page, you have a column, P-I-O-S?
Oh, that would be a new zoning district called the Public Institutional and Open Space Zoning District.
I tell you, you've got to watch these people. You don't know what they're doing. It's called a public...
Institutional and Open Space District, and it's in the...
Was it your last working session?
Yes, sir. And it would be...
I didn't know those initials.
Public open spaces, schools, parks, fire stations.
Cool. Okay. And then lastly, if we want to talk about, or Mr. Johnson, want to talk about another planning session to continue our earlier discussion, I don't know when people would like to do that. What's our upcoming schedule?
Well, you do have the meeting on August 9th. I mean, that's your next regular meeting.
Well, unless we have one in two weeks, right?
It is, sir.
What's that date?
I mean, I think it would be good for us to continue...
26th.
You know, trying to have these meetings to plow through all this. I mean, we have so much to cover.
I will be in Canada on that particular day, so...
We could have a meeting perhaps there.
In Banff? In Banff? You've got to come to Banff!
I think that's an excellent location. I don't think you'll get any complaints at all about having our next meeting in Banff. But how does that sound to other folks to have it on July the 26th? Maybe at our regular time and have it be a work session?
Just to cool over this again, the three and six?
Yeah, to continue that discussion because there is an awful lot there.
I can't commit to that right now, Mr. Chairman. I have to take a look at a few things.
Well, I mean, that might be two of us out, but, and I don't know what Mr. O'Toole's schedule is. Why don't we go ahead and set that as a tentative date, and if we just, and if it proves to be problematic for many people, then we can postpone it or move it to August. How's that sound? Okay. And that would be at 7:30 on the 26th. Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At last night's city council meeting, they did approve the vacation of Spring Street and associated expansion of the special use permit for the Hope House facility on Lafayette. After extensive discussions, they decided to put off for a month a vote on the Highlander Park Townhouse project at Lafayette. It was phrased in such a way that, well, we'll put this off for a month and do the first and second read at the same time, which implies to me that they were probably inclined to want to vote for it, but they wanted more time to think about it and consider issues. I think it was the larger issue of just development in general. Nothing seemed to be specific about the project itself in terms of its layout and arrangement. So that's been put off to the August 8th meeting. Also on the August 8th meeting, they'll be having another round of public hearing on the sign ordinance. This past Monday, there was the public information meeting, public forum about the sign regulations. There was about 25 members of the public and numerous staff and four city council members present. The general consensus seemed to be regarding the most contentious issues, the electronic message boards, that allowing them in Central Park would seem to be acceptable to most folks, but not allowing them in downtown and in the CT districts was generally considered not acceptable. The point of contention or differentiation is in highway commercial along Route 1 and Route 3, that there was, many folks saw both sides of that issue. And so I think that will sort of be, I think we're councils inclined to do is, is perhaps permitted in the highway commercial, but then address the issue through each area planning process. And so we will probably, in as we address the Maker District and highway commercial zoning, et cetera, in Route 1 and Route 3, well, they seem to be inclined to not allow them in those two specific areas. But that's a matter of some perception on my part. I think they're still trying to make their minds up on that. The other item that was on the agenda later was...
Did you hear much praise for the planning commission's proposal?
Can't say I did that, Mr. Chairman. I can't say. Ms. Sherman did an excellent job of sort of laying out four or five various options and all the issues.
She certainly did.
And so...
I thought that was excellent.
I think it was as good a job as, and presented all sides to it. No, I think it went well. The issue of the building outlining and the windows outlining, I think they reached, seemed to reach a consensus that they wouldn't go for the building outlining, but they would say if it's lighting within the window, we're not going to regulate that. So I think that's how they ended up on, going to end up on that. There seemed to be consensus not to allow the feather flags. Is there something else? Well, I assume there was another one.
Those are the major ones, I think.
I think those are the major issues. So just another point of reference, as an attorney, Mr. Page, you would probably find this more interesting. There was another Fourth Circuit Court decision regarding signage, regarding the regulation of commercial signs that has come into play within the past, I think, like six or nine months. And so that's making Rob and Marnie's job that much more complicated to sort of incorporate that into it. So the courts are creating challenges for us. So that's scheduled to move forward to the council on August 8th as well. The complaint amendment regarding vision statement and the economic development strategy was approved. At your August meeting, we're anticipating a couple items coming up. You all remember the Red Dragon Brewery. They're going to come back with a special use permit to do a slight expansion of their activity. They seem to have established a good rapport with their neighborhood, and the neighborhood seems to be in support of it. So that's, that seemed like a good thing.
To do what?
Go ahead, Mike. Expanding hours and...
Yeah, they want to work on their hours. There was a lot of rules about how much they could brew in terms of time because it was a change in non-conforming use from an industrial use. But since we changed the brewery law, they can get a special use permit now so they can normalize their brewing hours. That's one. A little bit of an expansion on their hours. They want to do some outdoor seating. They want to set up the ability to host a food truck, and they want to set the parameters for that along Princess Anne Street, so that'll be an interesting component of the application. I think that's generally it.
They seem to be doing good business. I drive by every day.
You also will be looking at an amendment to the special exception that was granted for Van Perro's property off of Sophia for the townhouse multifamily. He has a potential buyer for the property, and one of the proposed layouts or proposed building arrangements had a very large unit on the top floor, and they want to cut that from one unit to three units. It would not change the exterior of the building at all, but it was like a 4,000-square-foot unit that no one thought was economically viable. So they're asking, would be asking for a special exception amendment for two more units in that upper level with no exterior site changes. So that was coming on. And the third item I'm seeing on my list here is also another text amendment that actually the city attorney's office is sponsoring regarding cell tower provisions that have now been mandated by the General Assembly, that we have to be more conducive, if you will, to cell tower facilities. In brief, it would make as a permitted by right use, short cell towers that are consistent with the height in a zoning district. So if you have a 40-foot height limit, you could have a 40-foot tower, but if you go beyond that, then it'd be a special use. There's some parallel amendments regarding cell tower activities within the public right-of-way and the staff committee called CPERC, and I never can remember what it stands for, Public Utilities Committee, I can't remember what the C stands for, would be a reviewing entity. And I would remind you all that a member of this august body has a seat on this committee. I've worked for the city for four years and it's never met, so maybe first I will have a committee meeting, but I will have to get a member of the planning commission who's willing to...
There'll probably be a fight over that, but I'm sure we can figure out a way to do it.
I nominate Chris.
I'll throw my name in there.
There you go. There you go.
This is likely to be a meeting during daytime hours. Okay, okay. All right, that's fine. Great, great. Glad to hear that. So that, she'll be explaining that in infinite detail. It has a lot of ins and outs to it at your next meeting.
That's your report?
Yes, sir. I think that's the highlights.
Talking about the sign ordinance, public hearing on the 8th, I may go and speak in defense of the planning commission's proposal, but speaking for myself, I wouldn't be speaking for the commission. But I think we did a very good job on that ordinance, and I think Marnie did a very good job on it, and so who knows?
I think Marnie did an excellent job, too. I think, though, the problem with what we did was the complexity. There was always this, you know, one from Column A and one from Column B, and this is in C and CT. I mean, it made it very difficult, and I can understand why anybody else follows, what are you guys doing?
Yeah, it was almost as confusing as these signs tonight for the hospital.
Yeah, almost.
It took me 20 minutes to just figure out which page was what and what sign they were referring to.
Anything else? If not, meeting is adjourned.